...to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, and we'll do roll call attendance.
Dale Stevens.
Here.
Doug White.
Here.
Chuck Korn.
Here.
Joe McManus.
Here.
Glenn Lyle.
Here.
Beth Friend.
Here. Thank you. We have the agenda in front of us. We would like to remove the item 12D, the electronic door lock system. We will see that back before us, but just not at this time.
Number three.
Oh, I did that again. Tony, it's because Tony's here every time. I don't miss public comment in any other meeting but this one. It's time for public comment. Is there any public here who would like to deliver public comment? Seeing none, we'll move on to approval of the agenda where we'll remove item 12D for consideration for this month, but as I said, it'll be back before us at another point in time. With that, is there any changes to the agenda other than removal of 12D? No? Okay, we'll go forward with that agenda. And that is correct. Correct, Chief?
Yes.
Okay. With that, is there any conflict of interest declared on the agenda? Seeing no conflicts declared by any board member, we'll move on to approval of the minutes. The August 26 minutes are in your packet for review. They are approved unless there are any changes suggested or objections. Any changes or objections? Okay, we'll move forward and they are approved. And with that, we will get right to Kim with the financial report. How are you, Kim?
Good. How are you doing?
Good.
Good morning, everybody. You'll see in Exhibit 7, the revenue and expenditure report through August 31st. Nothing, pretty much stands as presented, nothing super particular to point out. Did have a little bit more earned interest this month because we had a seed arm mature. We're kind of tracking expense-wise, pretty consistent with where we normally are this year. You know, as I mentioned before, it kind of ramps up at the end of the year and I get a better picture of where we're going to end up at because we do have, tend to have larger expenditures towards the end of the year. Are there any questions on the revenue and expenditure report at this time?
No, but that's my favorite time of the year is guessing what will the end of the year will look like.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. And then in 7A, we're requesting the approvals of the money transfers for August 25.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions on those? Okay, then we are seeking approval of the $440,000 in money transfers presented to the board. Is there a motion?
Make a motion to approve the transfers as presented.
Is there support?
Support.
Okay. It was moved by Korn and supported by Lyle. Was that right? Is that one of them?
That works.
Okay.
Or just say everybody.
Did I pick the one person who didn't say anything?
Just say everybody else.
He gotta be a little quicker getting.
Well, so Lyle. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed by no? Okay, that motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Okay, and then we have the chief, I'm sorry, the claims and the electronic fund transfers, correct?
Yes.
$461,479.98. Are there any questions regarding any of those that are in your packet? And if not, is there a motion to approve those presented?
I'll make a motion.
Okay. Is there support?
Support.
Okay. There is a motion by Stevens and support by McManus to approve the claims and EFTs of $461,479.98. We'll do roll call approval.
Dale Stevens?
Yes.
Chuck Korn?
Yes.
Joe McManus?
Yes.
Doug White?
Yes.
Chuck Korn?
Yes.
Glenn Lyle?
Yeah.
Beth Friend? Yes. Okay, that motion is approved unanimously.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you.
All right. With that, we go to correspondence and we'll move on to the chief's report after that. So Chief Mackin is here. It's looking like your cost recovery is looking pretty decent for this year?
Yeah, it is. Good morning. Yeah, for last month, we had over $6,000 in claims submitted. We received over $16,000 in payments, so a good month. Just one matter I want to note, and I believe we brought it up before. So there's been, there was some discrepancies in how they're billing for certain, certain calls. Their billing essentially, you know, vehicle fires, RV fires, things like that, as structure fires. So those, that total amount of claims submitted has not been adjusted, so it should be less than that, maybe seven, 7, 8,000, somewhere in there potentially. Trying to get them to make those changes so that this is much more accurate. But again, they've corrected those discrepancies in how they're billing, so we'd like to see the report adjusted. So as far as total number of claims submitted, it should be lower than that. But regardless, you know, payments received is accurate, so, you know, looking pretty good.
I'm not worried about the details, but did I hear you say 70,000? I misheard that.
Seven.
Seven thousand, okay. Okay, great.
Yeah, 7, 8,000, somewhere in that ballpark.
Okay, sounds good. Any questions from board members? Okay, great. We'll proceed to your report then.
Okay. Okay. Contract negotiations are still underway with the firefighters local. Productive sessions, our next session is scheduled for Tuesday, September 30th. We do have another meeting planned already, or at least on the books for October 14th, and I'm sure that we'll definitely be utilizing that potentially a few more after that, just to hopefully be cleaning some things up. I had hoped that in between those two meetings, but I believe it should be after the October meeting, we plan to meet with High Street to review our insurance renewal with the anticipations, what we're predicting potentially around 13%, 14% increase. We just wanted to prepare if it was a little bit more, or something along those lines, so that we could look at any alternative plans if necessary. So we do intend to meet with them as well and, you know, look at that. In regards to any alternative plans, if that winds up being the discussion, that's something that we'll certainly include the local in, in terms of just getting some feedback on needs and things along those lines. Earlier this month, we met with Tom McDonald of Reliant Fire Apparatus for the approval pack on the new ladder truck. Everything is still moving forward with that very well. That meeting was to basically confirm all of our specifications, our layout clarifications, things that they're getting back from Pierce Manufacturing prior to going into production. We will do an approval visit that is still scheduled for May, probably late May, 26th for that. So that's, you know, the tentative completion date. That'll be at Pierce in Appleton, Wisconsin. So additionally, we also took time at the end of those approval packs to continue discussing specifications for the 2028 engine, which is part of our apparatus replacement schedule. That would essentially be identical to the 2024 Pierce that we have currently. You know, with our intent there is obviously to continue to standardize the fleet. That's been working well. The only subject of conversation that we've been having is, is if you recall, when we discussed the ladder truck, there was, based on timing, based on the chassis, we were kind of deciding between the option to go with the Packard motor. With this, because it's planning so far in advance in 2028, and looking at the cab configurations in regards to making it similar to the other engines, we have options. We have latitude with that to continue to go with the Packard or to continue to go with a Cummins because there'd be time. So those are the things that we're considering. Really, you know, we're looking at costs. There's some, some cost increases to a certain cab, the cab or chassis configuration that would allow for the Cummins or the Packard, I should say, it'd be increases there, but then there's also some savings with going with the Packard. We're hoping that it'd be significant, but actually by the time we went through and worked it out, it's kind of a wash. So it's really going to come down to preference and choice. So I think at this time, we're kind of leaning towards keeping it consistent and the same as the current engine and potentially going with that Cummins motor and the chassis that's the same. So a little bit more, potentially, potentially next month, we'll have, we'll have something to present to you on that. Been assisting Grand Traverse County 911 in resolving a problem with 911 call routing at two facilities in our jurisdiction, Goodwill Inn and the Meadow Valley, Meadow Valley Senior Complex. Those facilities, and I just thought it'd be interesting to share with you, those facilities use a cloud-based phone system. And we found, the actually dispatch found that their calls were being routed to a default 911 call center in handling center in Colorado. That did create a little bit of a transfer delay because they're getting the emergencies out there. They have to figure jurisdiction, who's the appropriate call handling agency for it. So again, we was contacted by 911 to kind of help facilitate the getting that corrected with those facilities. I did have conversations with both facilities. They're working with their IT to correct the problem. Since my report was written, the Goodwill Inn did, or I'm sorry, the Meadow Valley facility was able to have that corrected. And they did run a test call with 911, so now those are being routed properly. Apparently what they have to configure is a default to 911 or change the 911 routing from a default to where it needs to go to. And I believe there was some confusion with location too at that facility. So one of the facilities has been corrected, the other one is in progress. EMS call pending policy, we discussed a couple times before. It was actually implemented on September 8th. It is being monitored effectiveness. As of the last 911 meeting, there were no pending calls. There was one that was attempted to be pending, but it was not a Priority 3 call, so it couldn't be pending. They needed to get an ambulance there immediately and respond with that appropriate priority. So there's been significant discussion on the impact of this regarding the healthcare facilities. And again, since the majority of those, I think we have 15 within our jurisdiction, are within Metro's jurisdiction, you know, we have concerns on how this, this works out. I did actually meet yesterday, I met with the new operations manager with MMR, Jeff Hayford. We did have some discussions on it. He kind of came into this scenario with it and the way that these calls are handled. Very productive, professional gentleman. You know, he expressed this desire to see if there's some ways that maybe we can get this resolved. So, you know, these, these Priority 3 calls aren't impacting the 911 system as much. So again, going to continue to work with him and 911 to see where this, this goes. I will also remind you that in our conversations, it is a, it's a trial or a temporary protocol. We're going to evaluate it after six months and we're going to have 911 and of course myself are interested in having the data to see, okay, how many calls actually, how many calls did we have that were Priority 3, that were potentially appended? And then also, how many of them were successful? Where the pending of it, you know, actually worked, where the, the agency assigned that call was able to actually then make that transfer or actually that transport without it going to mutual aid department. So more to come on that. I'd also like to thank everyone who was able to attend the 911 ceremony this year. Special thanks to all our members and all who supported and contributed to its success. It's a good year. We did identify a few maintenance items and improvements that we would like to make to the memorial in anticipation of next year being the 25th anniversary. That's pretty significant. So we'll begin soliciting support for those efforts. Flag poles need to be fixed or replaced, some lighting, couple minor things like that. But again, those are just things we want to get taken care of before next year. So that completes my report. Happy to answer. Any questions?
Any questions for Chief Mackin? No? Thank you very much. Appreciate it. We will move on to Assistant Chief Tony Posey's report. How are you?
Good. How are you?
Good.
Under apparatus and equipment, we completed annual hose and ladder testing for 2025. Hose testing completed over about two days. We are probably about 5,000 feet of hose less than last year just because of the surplus of equipment that we got rid of last year. So we used to take three, sometimes even four days to complete hose testing. So we were able to shorten that up to about two, I'll say fairly long days. Under training, our firefighters worked the previous month on pediatric medical emergencies, chimney fires and carbon dioxide incidents, as well as confined space awareness and lockout-tagout. We also completed a full-scale exercise on August 20th at Cherry Capital Airport, utilizing our tanker along with Traverse City FD and Cherry Capital Airport FD. We drilled on supplying water from our tankers to the ARV trucks on the airfield during a simulated crash. Three firefighters and a lieutenant attended the Illinois Fire Service Institute Light and Fight Live Fire Training. This training includes hose handling and movement, ladder raises and carries, climbing, tool handling and fire attack. And we also have another crew that's going down there next month as well. Total of 107 pre-plans completed for the month of August. The goal is to have all buildings in our jurisdiction over 10,000 square foot completed before winter sets in. I just completed the schedule yesterday for that, so by the end of October, we should have all of those done. Over 10,000 square foot. So that puts us, I want to say just by the end of October, just over 1,000 pre-plans completed since last August, which is pretty incredible considering we were only doing about 36 a year before that. So I think there's just under 2,000 buildings, not occupancies, but buildings in our jurisdiction. So we're a little, we'll be a little over halfway there with all the major target hazards done. And if winter decides to hold back for a few more months, then we'll just keep going probably through November and December as well. We also completed our monthly team training in hazardous materials and technical rescue. A few calls of interest that we had, and those actually can kind of continue to roll in over the last week or so. I think we've had four, four or five fires in the last week. We had a smaller building fire at Liv Arbor Apartments, Arbor View. Fire damage contained to a single bedroom in one of the apartments, however, water damage from the suppression system. The fire was on the third floor, so wound up water damaging two other apartments below the fire apartment. An aide on that call, Traverse City Fire, spent about three hours on the scene. That, that fire occurred about four o'clock in the morning. We also had a cooking fire, which was also contained to a single apartment at Oak Terrace. TCFD aiding on that as well in about an hour. Noted injuries on there is none, and that is not the case. We actually had the individual that was residing in that apartment did wind up, wound up being transported to the hospital for smoke inhalation after the fact. So we do have a civilian injury on that fire. Statistics for the month of August, we had 613 total calls, 505 of those being EMS calls. The falls continue to be around 100. That's our top, top EMS call. And then you can see the priority breakdown for the EMS calls below that. 490 training hours for the month of August. And then you can see our overtime, both voluntary and mandated hours, 479, 384 respectively, and those are both up. And a lot of that has to do with more employees being off during the month of August on vacation. We had a couple weddings in the month of August, and then we had a few employees out for training as well. Some of those hours cover Captain Scanlon as well, who's going through the Staff and Command Program, and he wraps that up in October. So he's, he's been off a week every month since February, and he's completing class here next month. Our staff and equipment move-ups for August, just a few out of Station 12 and Station 9. Our overlapping incidents at 64% are 393 calls. And then our aid given and received, nine. Two, two aid given to the city, one canceled, seven to Blair, and auto aid received, we had two from the city coming into us. On the last page, breakdown of incidents both by township and by station.
Great. Any questions for Tony?
I just have a quick question. I know you guys do this. It just made me think of pediatric medical emergencies, the trainings. Remind me, I know you guys receive training for like individuals and children with different abilities, autism and so forth.
Yep.
That might have a different reaction to a firefighter. Is that covered in those or is that a different training?
It's different training. These are actually the state-required pediatric airway, pediatric heat and cold emergencies, et cetera, cardiac. But that is also covered in separate, I'll say non-required trainings by the state, but it is in our, our program for the department.
Okay, great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it. And then we have a report here for Assistant Chief Belcher, and he's not here today, or you, who's, you're covering that, Chief Mackin? Great.
Okay. I'll just present the Fire Marshal and Fire Prevention Bureau report, the activity. New fire prevention ordinances were sent out to, to legal counsel for review. Brian's hope is that we'll have this ready next month for your review. Chief Belcher and the inspectors attended an annual continuing education conference in Muskegon, the Michigan Fire Inspectors, last week. The inspectors are moving into the big box retail for annual inspections at this time. Fire Prevention Week coming up this year, it's October 5th through the 11th. Our public open house is October 4th from 11:00 to 2:00 p.m. at Fire Station 11. This year's theme is Charge Into Fire Safety Lithium Ion Batteries In Your Home. So good, relevant topic that's going to be covered. Just the three steps that are highlighted by NFPA is the, you know, buy-only listed, UL-listed products, charging safely. They cover some criteria for that. And then also recycling batteries responsibly. Obviously, those disposed of improperly could start a fire, so it's important to educate people on that. So I think it'll be a timely and appropriate campaign this year. Plan reviews are 19 in district, zero out of district. Inspections, the annual inspections we had were 37, 129 re-inspections, one special event, three complaint investigations, in-district permit inspections, two, and then mobile food vendors, two. I know, just one thing I'll share or add, Chief Belcher is working on updating procedures for food trucks and, you know, just in anticipation of any changes with that within our jurisdiction and potentially any increase there of those vendors. Fire cause investigation, Tony had touched on a couple of these. The multifamily apartment fire in Garfield Township is under investigation in the Liv Arbers. Fire was extinguished by the operation of a sprinkler head and was confined to one room. Senior living multifamily in Acme Township, fire was in the stairwell that was an electrical short. That was mostly extinguished by the staff who, who were trained and extinguisher used by Katie the week prior. So that's a good win for our public education program and fire prevention. Lastly, there is a, Oak Terrace, there's a multifamily facility. Obviously, it is a multifamily facility for the elderly. There was a cooking fire, unattended cooking. Occupant was transported to the hospital for smoke inhalation. The occupant was sleeping, was not altered. It was early in the morning and the in-apartment smoke alarm had been removed. So we were alerted by the properly functioning fire alarm system, which was activated by the common hallway smoke detector, and then subsequent 911 calls from, from other occupants. There is a, just an update, the recreational fire accident in Acme last month, Brian had first introduced. The burn subject is still hospitalized and has undergone several surgeries with life-altering injuries. The circumstances of the incident are still unclear and under investigation. If you recall, it was a, it was a rental property, kind of like an Airbnb-type scenario where some people were outdoor with a fire pit. There was some, something occurred. They accidentally were burned by the fire pit. So it was brought to our attention after post-incident, not during the incident or immediately following. So we did have our fire investigators follow up and do some checking on the, on the cause because, because of the natures of the injuries that the person had, you know, received. We just investigated a little bit further on it. So the Safe Neighborhoods Program is the door-to-door program. It's on hold. We're looking at some potential changes. Might be a little bit more targeted in terms of timeframe this year, but we still accept call and request for service for, to come do smoke alarm installs. No new classes on the Youth Fire Setter Program, and attached is Katie's report on public education life safety. Not going to go through the whole report, but a lot of good activity in there. As you can see in the review, she's been busy. She's been doing extremely well. She did attend the Youth Fire Setting Prevention Intervention Class at the National Fire Academy past month. She learned to identify intake, screen, teach and follow fire-setting youth and their families. She was one of six students in the class to be chosen to interview, an actual youth fire setter at their youth center. And she was definitely thankful to attend the class and learn how to handle these special cases. So again, doing very well. Her next page, we've got some photos there of interest of some of our events. And that concludes Brian's report.
Great, thank you. Any questions?
Yeah, what, forgive me, what's a muster point?
A muster point's where people basically gather. So like, for example, if you're talking about evacuation or family escape plans, where are we going to meet? We're going to meet at the tree in the yard. We're going to meet at the mailbags so that we can account for everyone.
Okay, great. Any other questions? All right, with that, we will move on to item 12A, the declaration of the 2011 Kubota RTV 900 and 2011 Kelly trailer as surplus.
Okay, 12A and 12B are, are kind of tied together. So I guess just real quick, just to kind of go over the plan of what we want to do with that. The 2011 Kubota that we have right now only has medical transport capabilities. So it has a skid on the back of it. That's the Kubota that we use on the Vasa Trail, on the trails at the Commons. Anytime we have to transport somebody out of the woods to an ambulance, we use that Kubota. The picture that you see in 12B is the Q-TAC skid that has both a Wildland pump and transport capabilities. If you remember from the last meeting, that's what we were approved through the Cosgrove Foundation to purchase. And so we have a pending order for one of those paid for through the Cosgrove Foundation. What we're looking to do at this point is sell the older 2011 Kubota and trailer to then purchase a second fire and EMS skid to replace. So we have two, we'll have two Kubotas left in the system. They'll both have the same skid on them, and one will be on the east side of town and one will be on the west side of town. And so in doing that, we would like, we feel like the, the surplus sale of the Kubota and the trailer would essentially buy the second skid. The proposal for that, again, in under, under 12B, is just over $14,000, and we do have some cost savings by shipping them together. They have a flat rate, $800 to ship the one that we bought through the Cosgrove Foundation. If we hold and purchase them both at the same time, there's, there's some cost savings for them to ship them together freight. So the ask is to take the current 2011 Kubota and the trailer that it sits on, surplus that through auction, and then the proceeds from that would then go to purchase the identical skid, same through the Cosgrove Foundation.
Okay, that sounds reasonable to me. And you're thinking this would probably all be a, pretty much a wash?
That's the hope, is that it would just be a wash for the project.
And if we, if we run just a little bit over, right, that happens, then we'd just be taking it, we'd have a sufficient line item to cover any gap? Okay. All right. Are there any questions on this proposal?
How do you, what's the process? It's at auction. Where do you, where does the...
Yeah, so we have, through our disposal policy, we would first put that up through like a local advertisement. And then if we don't have success through there, it would go on public surplus, which is an online bid. go on Public Surplus, which is an online bid. We've had probably the most success through there for these smaller, I'll say, under $20,000 vehicles. We've sold a few of the smaller SUVs and pickups through Public Surplus. And then, obviously, the larger apparatus, we've done through dealer. But I don't know how much luck we'll have with that locally, but we'll attempt to do that first, and then it would go on Public Surplus for 14 days.
What's the horsepower on that 2011?
Uh, I'm not sure off the top of my head. I think it's 40, but I'm not 100% sure.
Is the plan to try to sell them as a package, or split them?
Ideally, it would be as a package. And the last one that we sold, that's exactly what we did, was just the Kubota and the trailer. We could separate them, but I feel like it would probably be easier for us to market and sell as a package.
Okay, so, would you like these in separate motions? There would be a motion to declare the 2011 Kubota and the 2011 Kelly trailer as surplus and to dispose of as we typically do and according to policy. Is there someone who would, who would move that motion forward? Okay, I will. Is there support?
I'll support.
Okay, motion made by Friend, supported by Stevens. All those in favor, any further discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed by no? Okay, that motion passes unanimously. And then, we would be looking for consideration of the purchase of the Rescue Fire Skid, but we would really be looking at two times this, correct? The proposal that's in front of this, in front of us, we would look at two of these.
So, the one is already, already been purchased through the Cosgrove Foundation?
Right, we approved that last time.
Correct.
So, we'd look at a subsequent purchase, so just one.
Correct.
One additional one. Okay, is there a motion to approve the Rescue Fire Skid at $14,245?
I'll make a motion to approve that purchase.
Okay, and support?
Support.
Motion made by Korn and supported by Stevens. Any further discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed by no? Okay, motion passes unanimously. Should have asked you before, but are you sure that's a good number? Did you need, like, a 5% contingency or anything like that, or this is pretty recent?
No, this is a pretty recent quote.
Okay.
Yep, and we actually spoke to them within the last week about trying to combine the shipping to actually reduce that cost a little bit. So, actually, holding the one right now, that was purchased through Cosgrove until we had approval, so that they could ship them together.
Great, good. Glad to have two of those, one east side, one west side, consistency between the two of them.
Lot more versatile, yep.
Yeah. All right, that's fantastic. With that, we will move on to consider approval of plans for Station 8 renovations, and this is Item 12C in your packet. Okay, Chief Mackin, what do we have here?
Okay. Before we get into that, just thank you for that. I think that's another good consolidation for us. Instead of having the three pieces and trying to have to move them around, we know, regardless of call type, having one east, one west, if it's fire or EMS, we can use it. Plus, the fire skids, even though the two Kubotas we're keeping are newer, those fire skids were over 30 years old. So, you know, this is a good improvement for us, and again, it kind of consolidates fleet and, you know, it's going to be a big benefit. So, thank you for that.
Absolutely, thank you.
Moving on to 12C, as you recall from last meeting, we had discussions. Rick Schenzel did, the architect, did prepare the building plans and construction drawings for the renovation project. They are complete. After we had some conversations at the meeting, we did meet with him again just to review those, and it did bring up some of the questions that you had posed. He looked at it, if you can see, we were able to add the third dorm that we originally wanted into it, and then also able to keep the other toilet. The concern that was originally expressed to me about access or for it, he actually had found an exemption for fire stations within the state that provided us the opportunity to kind of have that. It's a slight obstruction. Tony, correct me in regards to the access to the shower. Barrier-free, I'm sorry, yeah, thank you. That was the exception there. So, we were able to keep that toilet, turn it, and then be able to maintain that. So, that was a bonus, and then, again, being able to add to the plans, that third dorm that we originally wanted. We'll have to see what that does to costs. It doesn't seem to think that it's going to have a significant impact on costs. The other addition that was not in there originally was, there was, it was brought to our attention, even though we had some difficulty finding it, or at least I did, that there was a door previously in the wall that went from the old township meeting room, which would become the day room, to the apparatus bay. Believe that we can bring that door back at a reasonable cost. But again, that's going to have to be determined once we get a construction manager and they look at the bids. But those were the changes, and then the only other additional change was, we didn't include the washer and dryer location, which was added in the mechanical room next to where the new shower would be installed. So, that's an item that obviously was in the, currently is in the trailer and would be needed to, need to be added to the station. So, those were the changes that he included. Happy that we were able to make some of those changes and, you know, have that meet the intent of the code. So, again, complete construction drawings, had additional conversations with the architect in regards to construction manager, that type of process. We feel that, he feels that this is good timing for us, being this time of year, because this is what some would consider a small project, even though it's significant for us, they would consider it a small project, and the time of year is pretty good because it's pretty much all interior work. So, it feels like it, we could do fairly well with that. So, where we're at, at this point, is in accordance to our purchase and bid policy, we'd like to send out RFP, request construction managers or construction companies to submit, you know, sealed proposals to us that we can look at and review, you know, by next meeting. Obviously, we'd send out the parameters, these plans would be available to them, and then, you know, we'd give them the timeframe. And of course, if anyone would request the opportunity to inspect the property prior to submitting their proposal, we would afford them that opportunity. So, that's, that's the point that we're at with it. Then, obviously, you know, at that time, at the next meeting, hopefully, we'd be able to look at those proposals, review them, see how we feel with the project, if it's, you know, falling where we want it to be with regards to the budget, and make a determination.
Very good. Remind me, I remember that we did authorize the contract with the, or scope of services with the architect. Did that go through the bid process, or did that go through the project management? I forget.
No, that, that just, that went, that did not go through the bid process, that just went through the.
Getting ready for the bid?
Yes, getting ready for the bid. So, essentially, at this point, we would do RFPs or bids, essentially, our policy kind of affords for both, be over the dollar amount, over 20,000. We would do RFPs, and part of the reasons, instead of putting it on, like, a builder's exchange at this point, being a smaller project, we could, we could send that information out to a list of construction managers. I did get a list of some, there are some that, you know, are Fire Marshal, other people are familiar with, people in the area that we can, we can send that to. We certainly make that available, and then we'd have that opportunity for them to submit that proposal. I agreed with Rick's recommendation, the builder's exchange, you're going to be getting people from all over sending bids on it that might not be familiar with the, with the area, the codes, et cetera. There certainly would be opportunity for that. And then, once we get essentially a construction management or a build proposal, most of that work would have to be bid anyway by them. So, we felt that that was probably the best opportunity for us, given the scope of this project.
Okay.
I've got a question.
Yep, go ahead.
Along that same line, do you have a, do you have a preference? Like, the architect technically, the construction manager technically can be handled like an architect. Without, as I understand it, without going, and I'm not trying to avoid the bidding process, but at all, because the key to the construction manager is knowing how to run the bidding project process, unless we're going to do it internally. My question is this, do you have a preference right now of a construction manager or not?
I do not. He, again, where I'm coming from, I got a list of reputable, they're essentially general contractors that have their own construction managers that are local. Got a list from him, about four or five, I don't think I included it there. Four or five there, I think that there might be one or two more that Metro's familiar with in terms of them doing work for Metro and/or our townships, that certainly we can, we can send it out to. I don't have a preference at that point, obviously. We're fortunate, we have familiarity within the organization to people that we feel do quality work. That's essentially how we kind of wound up with the architect, in terms of someone who has a good reputation, trusted work, et cetera. And I think at that point, we can make that decision, and obviously, it'll be a decision that'll be made at the board level. But I would feel comfortable, be honest with you, I'm interested to see the proposals. I want to see where, want to see where it falls in. I'd like to see, obviously, a project come in within budget, with a construction company, construction manager that everyone is comfortable with.
Good.
It's always, it's always good when you get the bids back. It's like Christmas Day that hits you over the head.
Yes, yes. Yeah.
All right. Any other questions? Okay, so, right now, you're seeking a motion to release the project specifications out for bid, correct?
Yes.
Okay, is there a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Okay, is there support?
It's worth it.
Okay, motion is made by White and supported by McManus. I have remembered everybody's last name today, by the way. We'll do roll call, a roll call on that. Stacy?
Doug White?
Yes.
Joe McManus?
Yes.
Bill Stevens?
Yes.
Chuck Korn?
Yes.
Lynn Lyle?
Yes.
Beth Brennan?
Yes. All right, thank you very much. Passes unanimously, and with that, good luck on the bids, and with that, we'll move to a potential, we did remove Item D, so we'll go on to E, which is a performance evaluation, and I will offer the motion to go into closed session under MCL 15.268, Section 81A of the Open Meetings Act for consideration of an employee evaluation at the request of the fire chief. Is there support for that motion?
I'll second that motion.
Okay, motion is made by Friend and supported by Korn. What, two-thirds, so we'll just do a roll call. We'll have to do a roll call.
Beth Brennan?
Yes.
Chuck Korn?
Yes.
Bill Stevens?
Yes.
Doug White?
Yes.
Joe McManus?
Yes.
Lynn Lyle?
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much. We will go into the, what is this room called?
Which one is this one? What room is this one called? Figer Room.
Isn't it called the back room?
That's it. Figer Room.
Did you know what time we went into closed session?
Good for you.
Okay, is there, I would move to come out of closed session under 15.268, Section 8F of the Open Meetings Act to where we reviewed and considered the, oh, well, a little bit different. Hold on one second. She had me all straightened out and then I went and messed it up. No, 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 no. I would move to come out of closed session that was held for consideration of the employee evaluation.
I'll second that motion.
Thank you. Thank you. Moved by Friend and supported by Korn. We'll do a roll call vote.
Seth Friend?
Yes.
Seth Korn?
Yes.
Dale Stevens?
Yes.
Doug White?
Yes.
Bill McManus?
Yes.
One Lyle.
Yes.
Okay.
Last but not least, Ray.
Is there a motion to edit as noted during closed session, receive and then file with Metro with the fire chief evaluation for the evaluation period of April 1st, 2024 through September 23rd, 2025?
Sure.
Okay. Is there support?
Support.
Okay, motion made and supported. Motion made by Stevens, support by White. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed by no? Okay, motion passes unanimously. And I don't have my handy dandy agenda here. Do we usually have another public comment at the end? Thank you. So this is the opportunity of-
Yeah, this is going to be busy. There's a lot of-
Any suggested items for future board meetings? I think staff has covered those through some of their reports. Public comment? There is no public comment here, but if you want to become public, you have the opportunity. And seeing none, then we'll adjourn at 10:38. Everybody, thank you and have a great day.
Thank you.
See you later.
What's the chief's name again?